Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, July 17th. We're starting a few minutes late. Thank you for the indulgence on that. First, oh, excuse me, the all-board is present, except for Mr. Kalenda, who is not here. Our first scheduled appointment is for interviews for vacant boards and committees. Mr. Warren, I see that you are here, sir. If you would mind coming up and taking a seat. Appreciate it. I wanted to thank you for coming. I know that you did an interview for the MTC already through the school committee and everything, but I know this board didn't have the opportunity to meet you, to thank you for stepping forward and volunteering. So that's basically what tonight is for. And again, thank you for going through the process again, so we could be a part of it.
Thank you very much.
So, I appreciate it. So, anything you'd like to share with us? Again, you've been through this process once before, so... Anything about why you might want to serve on the Cable Television Committee and...
Well, the cable television industry is going through some changes right now, in terms of people are, you know, cutting the cord and moving off onto streaming services. So, it seems like at this particular time, the negotiation of a new contract will probably be, or probably should, include a few more issues, you know, around that, just to make certain that the very impressive facility, which I actually got a tour of last month for South Borough Access Media, can continue, you know, to provide benefits and value to the community. And I think there's some concern that, you know, if cable TV subscribership continues to decline over the next few years, that, you know, the funds that might flow to them will be, you know, restricted. So, I guess, you know, what I'm saying is, it's an interesting time, and it sounds like an interesting, interesting thing to be looking at at this point.
Wonderful. Can I just ask what your background is in?
I have a long career in technical architecture design for large business systems, and then also business analysis. So, towards the end of my career, I'm retired now, but towards the end of my career, I was looking at the interface between business systems and, you know, the business strategy and such, and whether or not there were improvements that could be made for the businesses to, you know, get more value out of their systems.
Wonderful. Thank you. I think you're a wonderful candidate. And again, I thank you for volunteering that once but twice, and I will open it up to the board. Questions?
No, thank you for agreeing to serve.
Yeah, no questions. I think your background experience will fit perfectly with this. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. I apologize, I wasn't able to come in during your last meeting back in June. I had a, that day, I had a hand surgery, and I probably wasn't in the best shape in terms of pain medications and such. But, thank you for having me back.
I'd just like to make a motion to appoint Mr. William Warren to the Cable Television Committee, term to expire six thirty twenty-one.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you, sir. I know as well, you have, just to thank you again, I know that you have been attending meetings even though you weren't appointed. So, again, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Mr. Ballantyne, fiscal year 2020, draft budget schedule. Sir, you have the floor.
Good evening. About a month ago, I believe, you received a draft schedule for the budget calendar. I think we had one minor error in there on the date of the town meeting for next year, so that is March 23rd of 2019, which may seem like a long ways away, but is probably gonna arrive before we all know it. So, this calendar, we are asking to be just approved tonight, so we can move forward with starting the process of notifying the department heads and working with advisory, and internally to start doing some of the budget work that we do annually. You'll notice it's pretty similar to last year. I mean, you've probably already browsed it, but everything is pushed back about a month, which will present some challenges to some of our estimates and, you know, financial outlooks as we go along. But we'll, we'll do the best we can, and, you know, we'll identify those as we move on. So, that's about it. I just hope we can get this finalized, and we'll, in the next day or two, we'll start distributing and working on the budget, so...
Well, usually you approve the, approve the schedule.
Questions for Mr. Ballantyne?
I have one. Brian, did you receive any feedback from the advisory board on this calendar, or any suggestions or anything?
No, I don't, I haven't heard anything unless the town administrator has...
No, so we've had no, we've had no formal feedback from, from advisory. Have had the opportunity to meet with, with the chair and, and just kind of, you know, go over what this means. Obviously, you know, an earlier town meeting means that we're starting things earlier, and there's gonna have to be a little bit more adherence to guidelines, you know, to, to the deadlines, the timelines, and, but, but have not formally discussed this with, with the full advisory.
And all, I'm sorry for asking the questions, but I wasn't at the last meeting. All of the dates have been confirmed by the town clerk, so everything's correct.
Yes, we did distribute that back, yes.
I'm comfortable.
Yep.
Did you?
I'm pretty sure we did.
Okay. Well, normally, yeah, normally, the, normally, the, the budget letter is approved by the board before, you know, it's submitted out to the departments.
Do we have a motion to approve the budget letter and calendar dated June 22nd, 2018, as submitted?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on the agenda, Susan Batka. I hope I'm saying that right. Okay, thank you, from Youth and Family Services Commission Update. Thank you very much for coming.
My pleasure.
We appreciate hearing all the good things you're doing. Thank you.
Sarah's away, otherwise she would be here tonight. She's away with her family, a much needed vacation. So, summer, it's a little bit lighter in there, but she still continues with individual, family, and couple counseling base, you know, as needed, and referrals to outside providers and programs and resources. We do a concert series in the summertime that's free of charge for families, and we've been doing it, this is either the fourth or the fifth year, and I've been involved with Youth and Family Services for that long, and the attendance is tremendous, and it's multi-generational. You see grandparents, their kids, and their children there, no cell phones. It's kind of refreshing. So, we had one last week, and we had over 250 people, food trucks and music and, and then we are still continuing with our campership program, which has become very successful. And we have the fuel assistance intake, which doesn't really have to do with right now. Our Mental Health Awareness Month, which is every May, because of some of the things that have been happening, not just in our town, but in other towns with problems with drug overdoses and anxiety and depression, I feel that that need has increased since I started there. So, they, they had an art show, they have done a couple of speakers, but I really feel more than, more than ever that this agency or group needs to be here, and we appreciate the funding. There's a lot, the stress stuff on kids now, and divorce, and death of a parent, everything has increased, I feel, from, from the, from the beginning when I started. And we still have our holiday giving program. Any families in need, we get those families' names from the nurses in the schools and churches in the area. Our organization provides gifts to both the children and the parents. And we meet once a month. In the summer, we, we take the summer off, but we have these concerts, so we're, most of, most of all, the board members are at that as well, as well as Sarah and Megan and Shannon. So, I'm nervous. I don't...
No...
If you have any questions for me?
No, don't, don't be nervous at all. I thought there was, this was an important thing to do, to bring forth some...
No, I think it's a great idea.
...of the board and committees in town. It gives us an opportunity to hear what Youth and Family Services is doing, because typically, most people at home or whatnot, unless you use the service, then you don't necessarily know what's going on. So, I think it's great that you're here. It gives the public as well the awareness to know all of the wonderful things that you are involved in and what you're doing. Is there things you find you need that maybe not on the forefront, that we as a board, or even as a town, could or should be aware of, that we might be able to do to help with the importance of what you're doing?
I said the only negative thing I could say is that they don't toot their horn enough. They work so hard. And like I said, I really feel like it's, the need is there so much more now. We have, you know, this emergency fund, which you think in this town people don't need, unfortunately, and that's just not the case. A medical bill comes up, or a dental bill comes up, and it's a thousand dollars, and people don't have that kind of money. Or, they need, they need fuel for the winter. They're just always there. Their doors open. I, yeah, I, I just think that the need, they have, Shannon is kind of new. She's a part-time employee now, and that's helped out a lot. And we have a volunteer, a senior volunteer who's awesome, who does it, she said, to help with her taxes, but I really think that she enjoys it as much as we enjoy her. So, she's on a part-time basis and sits at the front desk as people come in. So, before, we didn't have anybody to greet people. So, you kind of just sat in a waiting area.
Well, this is nice. You got to come and toot that horn that doesn't get tooted all that often.
No, they're, they just...
So, it's, it's well appreciated.
Thank you. They're awesome, all of them. So, and I enjoy working, I work with them. And like I said, these concerts are, if you have a chance, you should come by.
Wonderful. Any comments or questions from the board?
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, Bonnie. Thank you very much.
I think you, it would be helpful if you would tell the public where you're located now, what your hours are, and how they enter the building.
Yes. So, we're in the Art Center, which is a much nicer space than where we were on Central Street, not to complain. But it's, it's all been kind of refurbished so that it's private. If you're actually going in there for counseling, you, you don't have to sit in front of other people as other things are going on. So, the, the space is wonderful, and I think that that's out on the, the South Borough website, too, I hope.
And the building's handicap. Has an elevator?
Yes, yes, it is. And we're in there with recreation as well, so, and that's about it.
Well, thank you. And it's great to know about some of the programs, like you said, with the opioid crisis and, you know, some of the mental health challenges that are out there. It's good to know that we have a firm base here in town, and that there's, you know, there's good people running it, and the emergency fund as well. If somebody truly needs help, to know there is a resource for them.
Right. And again, we, my husband and I have been here for 25 years, and for the first 10, I don't think that I knew that this agency existed, except for maybe at Christmas time with the gift giving program. But, they do so much more than that, so much more.
Thank you for coming in and sharing with us.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
That wasn't so bad.
We're not that scary. Next up, Kristin Lavalt, Chairperson for a Recreation Commission Update. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Jen Hansen's also going to join. And actually, I just want to take the opportunity to also thank Youth and Family Services. The concerts are fantastic, project friend my kids have participated in. I mean, it really is amazing, but probably not knowing what they do. All right. So, today, we want to come back to the Board of Selectmen. It's been a couple of months since town meeting. You know, again, it's our goal to kind of start coming on a more regular basis, not only to talk about the projects that are ongoing, but of course, capital planning, which is getting underway. We've been meeting with the town administrator and treasurer. So, today, we, we're playing something kind of more informal, talk about the projects, give you an update, and then start talking about capital planning, what we're thinking about for fiscal year 2019, what we've been talking to Mark and Brian about. And then, our plan would be to come back in August with a more formal presentation of that capital plan for '19 and beyond. So, I'll start with just a few project updates. The good news is, we can officially close the books on two of them, Nine Eleven Field and the Choate Lights are officially complete and closed, as confirmed by DPW. So, it's been a long road, but, you know, Nine Eleven especially went really well, and it looks great if you haven't gone by to see it. I really encourage folks to do so. We hope to market in some way with the community in the coming months. Of course, the big question on everyone's mind is Fayetteville Park, I think. Again, what's unfortunate what happened there, in case folks don't know for the background, but the last piece of work that needs to be done is paving, as well as making sure that it's ADA compliant. So, that work had been out for bid. There was a contract, and then we had bad weather during the spring, really out of the control of anyone. So, it had to go back out to bid, get a new contract, which is in place now. I spoke with Karen today, actually, and so the work right now is targeted for next week. Now, of course, if anyone's looked at the weather for next week, it doesn't look great. But, we talked a little bit about it today and what that meant. And the work's targeted for two days, even with some rain, you know, it can hopefully get complete in the next day. So, we're really hopeful that this is it. So, August 11th, I think that Saturday, is the date that we had earmarked tentatively for kind of the grand reopening. So, again, hopefully looking forward to that, and we're almost there, and that work will be done. In general, for the new projects, the items that were approved at the last annual town meeting, they're just in general initial permitting and engineering pattern that occurs before construction. Again, this is, you know, information I'm, I'm passing on from talking to Karen. So, the Trotter Track Engineering Contract, that's ready to be signed, that allows, once that's signed, the specifications for bidding, as well as the bid can move forward, and then be targeted for the, the summer/fall timeframe. Of course, working with the schools to make sure that the work is not going to be intrusive, so working in tight partnership with them. The same goes for De Petri. That engineering contract is also signed, and preliminary engineering work is underway, again, with the same targeted timelines. And the last one I'll mention is the Mooney and Richardson Tennis Lights, Tennis Court Lights, sorry, the Mooney Baseball Field Lights, the Richardson Tennis Court Lights. Those revised plans, the plans had, had to go through some revisions. They're ready to go. One of the agreements that had been discussed in the past was to go to the planning board and have a public forum, so that's in the process of being planned as the immediate next step prior to moving forward with any equipment purchases or contract signage. Again, it's our intent to, to come here on a regular basis, obviously with Karen as well, to provide these types of updates, but I'll, I'll just kind of pause there and see if there are any questions.
All good news.
So far.
No, it will. I think, I think everyone's working together better now.
Yeah.
As far as the capital plan, I know, Kristin, you said you've had conversations with Brian and Mark, Mr. Purple. Are we including the advisory board as far as any information, as far as what the discussions are, so everybody is starting at kind of the same point?
Yeah. So, what happened was, obviously, we had the May town meetings, and then there was a kind of brief hiatus, I think, while everybody regrouped. And we started meeting internally again, just to kind of readdress, or we had maybe a meeting, our priorities. And then, a couple of us started meeting with Mark and Brian to kind of talk through it. Now, we're at the point that we agreed, okay, we, we've got something we should now reengage with the Board of Selectmen and advisory. So, we did write to advisory to inform them that we'd be here this evening, so they could participate either in person or, or watch it, and hopefully, we're addressing some of the same questions. But, absolutely, the, the idea is to keep everybody engaged, on the same page, know exactly what it is that's being discussed and planned.
So, if there's any changes, advisory will be made of the same changes at the same time that we may be made?
Yeah.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And then, obviously, if, if there was ever a need to...
I know, you'd be in here.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Both of you. Other comments?
I would like to say, thank you. This was really informative. This was really great, Kristin. You guys have clearly put a lot of time and effort into getting all this information together. I know there was a lot of question on the projects, and, and meeting with Mr. Purple and Mr. Ballantyne is, is, it, it shows your commitment to moving forward with these, and it shows a commitment to, to us and to the town as well. So, I commend you for coming here tonight, and all these updates are great. It's nice to see, you know, fields, things getting done and completed. It's, it's nice to see the lights on at, at Choate. I'll throw a question out there for you, though, on Choate. I'll throw a question out there for you though on Chote. I know currently the lights for, it's primarily being used for baseball. I had a parent ask me, I guess there were some kids that wanted to go down and play basketball one night. And I was going to talk to Doreen, but she was on vacation about this. So I did get a call saying, well, you know, is there a way that maybe in the future, there's something we could do that, you know, kids, I mean, it's great that the kids want to go out and that's what they want to do, is do something wonderful, outside athletic, non-electronic. So that's just a suggestion for you that maybe there's something, I don't know, a timer on the lights or something.
No, actually, it's, it's a great question and one that I got a chance to catch up with Karen on today. So it wasn't originally part of that initiative, you know, the project itself, the scope, it wasn't in there. However, definitely the intention to put in essentially a button that allows for those lights to be put on for an hour time increment, which would then obviously shut off at whatever the agreed time was.
Yep.
Where that is right now is it's kind of being incorporated into the plans with the repaving for the school, because there will be kind of a relocation as part of that effort of the actual basketball hoops. And so to make sure the lights are directed at the right location and the buttons put in, those discussions are happening right now between DPW, the school, and obviously REC as well.
Perfect. And hopefully the mom is watching that asked me that question and it's answered. So thank, again, thank you very much and, and thank you for coming tonight and sharing all this. I think it's, it's great. It shows your commitment and we appreciate it.
We've got a little more.
Well, keep going, keep going. Sorry.
Is that okay?
Go, 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 absolutely.
Okay. So for capital planning, we just wanted to kind of give a quick update on that, again, preview of what will likely be coming with a more formal presentation in August. And that's just what are our priorities for fiscal year 2019. I don't think it's going to come as much of a surprise, Calander Field, as well as the Niri Design, so turf. So this spring just kind of further emphasized the, the importance and need that we feel as well as other organizations in town. For example, Southborough Use Soccer of having a turf, another turf field. Again, anyone who participates in sports knows that it was a really hard spring with lots of rain and lots of field closures. That's not the only reason. Again, I won't, you know, rehash all the reasons, but it also will help us get into the cycle in which we can rest our fields. So those remain top priorities and what we're working on putting into the plan and what we'll formally present next, next month. There is an addition, something kind of new, not as significant as those two efforts, and that's at the Finn Tennis Courts. So in the spring, we did shut down the skate park due to safety concerns. So that portion of the, the two courts is locked right now and eventually that equipment will be taken away. And then the question became, well, what do we do with that court? So we did do a survey this spring that Jen led and then as well, we had a public forum, although not very heavily attended, to get some feedback on what to do with that. Right now, the initial feedback wouldn't indicate that it'd be a skate park, right? Basketball court and tennis court seem to be the bigger needs or desires of the folks in town. That said, we've done a couple of things. We pursued some estimates and they range, the high end being if we were to resurface both courts, because one's in needing of just resurfacing, and transition one to a basketball court, the high end of that cost would be around $21,000, I think it was. So right now, we'll slate that into the capital plan. That said, we're going to hold another public forum just to give one more opportunity for folks to come and voice their opinions. And also, we're going to look into whether or not CPC funds could be used for a project like that as well. So right now, we'll put it in there, but again, continuing to hash out what the actual plans would be and cost, as well as whether or not CPC funding or other should be pursued prior to the capital plan.
Is that scheduled yet, the public forum?
No, no, we talked, you know, summer now is getting away. We talked amongst ourselves, maybe August, the August timeframe, maybe our August meeting, which we, we've just got nailed down the date and then giving enough time to promote it so others could attend, because then once you get into the school year, I mean, there's really no good time.
Has the school given any thought to maybe...
Yeah, we've actually spoken to both Principal Ryan and their gym cashier, Mr. McCabe. So they've given us a lot of input as to what they'd like to see or their preferences and then also how they could use the courts as well with, so.
So do they have a preference, whether basketball or tennis?
So they have a preference for basketball, just because they're, the hoops that they do have are in really bad shape and they're in a sloped parking lot. It's not the greatest. So their preference would be see a basketball court go out there as well as upgrading the tennis courts.
Thank you.
No problem. So again, that's, that's just something new that hadn't been brought up before, so more to come on that. The last item we have is more a question for the Board of Selectmen, something that we've just collectively been hearing more about from citizens coming to us, so we want to approach the board. Oh, actually, two things. You know, again, I mentioned that Calander continues to be a priority and we've already spoken, but that's obviously dependent on the outcome of the discussions that the Board of Selectmen, Brian and Lisa are specifically leading. So we will put it in that, but obviously, we need to await the outcome of those discussions. And then the last item that we actually wanted to bring, it's pretty new in terms of, we haven't talked about it before, but I think it's been discussed in many different groups around town. We've been approached multiple times about questions on the Copasso Farm property. So as we look to build out potentially more fields or even a, you know, just different opportunities, folks really feel like there's a piece of property that's ideally situated and could, could satisfy many different needs within town beyond just recreation, certainly open space. And so having the question brought to us and us not really having a response, we wanted to bring it to the Board of Selectmen to see if there is knowledge about the status of that property and if it's something the town might ever consider approaching the owners about, just to see if it's even something that should be taken into consideration in planning, not just for recreation, but clearly other organizations within the town who would also have an interest in that property. So we want to take that question that we've been getting and bring it to you tonight to see if it's something that the board might consider more formally approaching as a question to the property owners.
That is a good question and I know I've been approached and I know we've gotten some, some emails on this as well from various groups, excuse me, in town. That, that property still is in Chapter 61A. I would think possibly the board would be interested in putting this on for an agenda item and to have a discussion and decide if, you know, that's a conversation that is worth pursuing.
The property owner approached the Board of Selectmen maybe five years ago about the property. It was undecided what they were going to do with it. It's in a family trust, I believe, at the time. But they did ask to be on the agenda, so it was their request at the time. So right now, it's still in 61A and they can approach us. I don't know who the party would be to approach them. I don't know if it, I don't know how we do that. Typically, the owner of the property comes in on their own. We don't typically go and seek out properties. I mean, I assume we could reach out to them again to see what the status of that conversation was.
Could do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that's information, it's not a commitment.
Right, right.
So, Mr. Purple, would you do that?
So that, that, you know, that covers what we hope to...
I do have one question about Niri or any project. Are we going to be doing any kind of fundraising? Has that been part of the discuss, it has come up. Will we be looking at raising funds similar to Westboro or Shrewsbury or any of the other communities?
Fundraising specifically has not come up. I think what's come up in the context of Niri Turf specifically is sponsorship.
Okay. Who's reaching out for that sponsorship?
We haven't reached out for any sponsorship yet.
But who would be doing it?
Oh, I don't know. That's a good question.
Friends of, the town?
Because I don't think, I know at least the director can't reach out for that.
I don't know who, who has the authority to do it, so you might want to ask before you start.
Right.
Who gives that authority and what organization can do it if they can do it?
Okay.
All right, you might want to know that answer soon before you start down that road.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? All right, thank you again for coming in. We appreciate the update. We'll be looking forward to your next one.
See you next month.
Thank you. All right, next up, Chairman's Report. I just have a, a couple quick things. I had the opportunity in, when working with Chris Robbins from EDC to go and visit some of the businesses in town and I had a absolutely wonderful tour of St. Mark's that I've never had before. I know sometimes they open different events up to the public. I know that Recreation uses some of the fields and the rinks and stuff there, but I actually had a tour, which was very appreciated by the leadership at St. Mark's. And the only thing I will say is Harry Potter comes to mind. It is absolutely incredible and I would encourage any member of the public when they do open things up, I think for jazz festivals, they've given the opportunity and so on. I mean, they're, they're a good neighbor in town and they really want the townspeople to be able to see the things that they do and be a good partner. And I will tell you, it was the most amazing hour and a half that I had from the chapel that I didn't even know that was there and the history. It's, it's absolutely amazing. So I thank them very much for opening their doors and taking the time to give us even an update on some of the construction that they're doing for the kids as far as weight rooms and things like that. But I know they've been very good in working with Recreation to use the facilities there, so that's just one quick update. It was, it was fun and I appreciated it very much, so. Also, on August 1st, there was a tradition going back to 1909 that the Boston Cane Award, at one point, I'll just give a brief synopsis. In 1909, one of the Boston Post newspaper in Boston wanted to increase membership. So they created this program and sent out 700, they called them the Boston Canes, and it was given to the oldest resident in all of the towns. And a lot of towns still follow that tradition. Southborough has retired the original cane. It's, it's kind of hard to keep track of the cane when you give out because it only comes back, unfortunately, at someone passing. So we do have a replica cane here in town and on August 1st, we're going to be presenting it to our oldest senior here in town. I'm not going to say her name just yet, but on August 1st at the Senior Center. So it's a great program to be able to start back up again here in town. So looking forward to that. And lastly, just to say that Mr. Schifrin and I are going to be working on a successor agreement for Mr. Purple for his contract coming up, just to make the board aware of that. And that's all I have. Thank you. Mr. Purple, Town Administrator Report.
Thank you. Just, just a couple of things, again, some of the behind the scenes stuff. As you know, we had a contract with CMRPC for our EDC Coordinator and that has since ended. CMRPC declined to continue to provide that service. Obviously, you know, they felt that Dominique was, was valuable. They wanted her back in the office. So we have advertised for EDC, a candidate for the coordinator's position to try and fill that. It's difficult to find a part-time position, especially one that really doesn't carry benefits with it, and therefore, it's really kind of limited the scope of candidates. We have reached out to neighboring communities to have discussions about the potential sharing of a position, of a full-time position. And it appears that the conversation that I've had with my counterpart, the town of Milis, may be bearing some fruit with that. It's a little bit of a funding issue for them. They have a Fall Town Meeting and they would seek funding at that meeting. So it may be that we were able to, to bring somebody in that would have some more stability in the position, probably, you know, maybe looking at a January 1st on board, bringing somebody on board for January 1st. So I just wanted to give you a, a quick notice that that discussion is ongoing and, you know, if it, if it continues to grow legs, I'll, I'll be back to you. And obviously, we'd be looking to do some type of memorandum of, of understanding with the town of Milis if that were to happen. Something else that, again, it's always nice to talk about after it's over and things are done. We had some issues with our ambulances that, that probably, you know, no one is aware of. We had one that was out for an extended repair and then the second one had an accident where the fuel tank was punctured. So all of a sudden, we have no ambulances. And this is where mutual aid, you know, comes in to, to great assistance. And there was a letter that was provided by the chief over to Chief Cassidy in Holliston, essentially thanking them for their mutual aid and the use of their ambulance to help provide us coverage while we went through this issue earlier this month and the end of last month and, and helped us to make sure that we still had an ambulance in service, still were able to provide transports when they were needed. So thank you to, you know, to the town of Holliston for, for doing that. The, the one other piece...
Are we back up now with both ambulances?
Everything, we're, we're back up and, and everything is good, so. The, the only other thing I wanted to just quickly comment on, so we're having our weekly construction meetings. I know that Jason Malanowski sent out an email to the board that he'll be coming in at the next meeting to give the required quarterly update that, from the, from the Building Committee. But just so you know, you know, obviously, you know, you can see that things are moving along down there. We had construction meeting this morning. The footings are in place for the new clubhouse location. The septic field is, is just about complete. I believe tomorrow, the 11,000 gallon septic tank is being delivered and so that is going to be ongoing. The clubhouse foundation walls are being put in this week. And then next week, you know, the slab and the damp proofing of the, of the foundation walls will be happening. And sometime near the end of next week, they're going to begin doing the excavation for the building foundation for the public safety facility. Unfortunately, this Phase 1 is all golf, because you've got to make a lot of these changes and do these things which, you know, to accommodate and, and make, make room for the, for the facility. So things are continuing to move. Golf is in its temporary location at this point. It has, has temporary power. I'd like to thank Chief Morrow for working with National Grid to get them in to do the hookup for the temporary power, which means that we didn't have to use temporary generators, which use a lot of temporary diesel, which is expensive.
Generate a lot of noise.
They generate, you know, so there would have been noise dampening, we would have had to, so there were a lot of things we would have had to do that we don't have to do. And so I, I wanted to thank the chief for, for working with Bob Moran at National Grid to make that happen. So again, things are moving along. You're going to start to see, you know, some things happening. Again, Phase 1 is supposed to be completed, which means that the clubhouse will be in its new location by August 15th. So hopefully about a month from now, Jason is coming in at the August 14th meeting. You know, he'll be able to have some good news at that meeting, so.
Do we know how golf has been doing through this part?
So it appears that, that everything has, has been going, you know, as, pretty much as planned. I mean, I, you know, you knew it was going to be somewhat difficult. I think that as the utility work works its way down, down Corderville, it's becoming, it'll become more difficult. You know, golf is going to have to park either at the Senior Center. We've talked with the school and the superintendent has agreed to allow parking in the lower parking lot for the golf course. There is an agreement and an understanding that once the new access road is cut in, that with the exception of the bus times in the morning and the afternoon, that golfers will be able to go in the Woodward Access, go through the new access road and the new parking lot area for golf will be cut. Okay, so that will, so that will work out well. We've, we've worked on that accommodation. I've seen the reports that have come from Mr. Harrison and it looks, you know, it looks like, you know, the rounds are, you know, are holding up. We had a discussion this morning, you know, the leagues have continued, the morning leagues, the afternoon leagues. So, you know, maybe the walk-up traffic, you know, is probably diminished a bit, but it looks like the, you know, the, the leagues and everything are holding their own at this point.
Mark, did you say when they're going to do the cut-in and when is the parking for, how long are we looking for potentially parking at the school or the Senior Center? Do we have a time frame?
The cut-in, the cut-in is supposed to be done as part of Phase 1, so I would say that it's going to probably happen sometime in the next month. So again, when Jason comes on August 14th, hopefully, you know, he can give more of an update and there's a lot more of, you know, good news to share in terms of where we are with those things.
Perfect. Questions?
Discussions about parking, is that taking place with the Council on Aging as well?
The discussions...
There's no conflict with activities?
Well, that's one of the things we're, we're ensuring that it doesn't impact. That is a very, that's secondary in terms of, that is not the primary location of where you want people parking, because we understand with the building...
It's limited now.
With the building inspector, with all of the COA activities and also with the town town clerk running the transfer station stickers and everything, you know, putting them on the cars for the seniors and everything and that. It's really a busy area. So we're trying to, that's a very secondary source. So we're recognizing that.
Thank you.
All right. Next, consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to hold?
Actually, I had a comment on the minutes from January 30.
Okay.
The last comment I had, I don't know what page it is, but it's a section, it's the last paragraph just before public comment, where it says, "Mr. Shea asked if an email from Mr. Boland was addressed." I'll let you read, Mr. Schifrin asked.
Okay.
And then there was one other, just one other change to the, I had that change that you had noted to me as well for the January 30th minutes, but the June 21st minutes at the bottom of Page 1 under Mr. Ballantyne's presentation about the interdepartmental transfers, third line in, it talks about the $55,000 to the DPW for summer nights. That actually should read "snow and ice." I know it sounds very similar, so, but I don't think there's any way that we'd spend $55,000 on summer nights. So that, that should be "snow and ice."
Nice try.
So, yeah, now that Recreation is left, we-
Kristin.
Oh, sorry, Kristin, you're still here. You didn't hear that, so. Yeah, so with those, with that amendment as well for the, for the June 21st minutes.
Okay. That being said, do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes, January 30th, 2018, and June 21st, 2018, as amended? Number two, accept resignation of Sarah Di Stefano from Youth Commission? Number three, accept resignation of Laura Burton-Azzi from Southborough Scholarship Advisory Committee? The, number four, fiscal year 19 reappointments? And number five, approve fiscal year 19th oil contract for Facilities Department?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next up, other matters properly before the board. Discuss release of August 11th, 2016 email from John F. Rooney. Mr. Purple?
Madam Chairman, as was included in the packet, on June 12th, the Attorney General's Office informed the town that the open meeting law complaint that was filed against Mr. Rooney was upheld. And as a result of that decision, the board was required to make public the August 11th, 2016 email from Mr. Rooney to Town Council, which the AG's office identified as the reason for their finding. So that email was included in the packet. It was in the public packet. Obviously, this is on the agenda, which is the board's public disclosure of that. There was a question which I just want to address. The AG's decision did require that the board release the email within 30 days of the decision. However, given the board's summer schedule, and Aldo did speak with the AG's office, the email could not be released by myself. It couldn't be released by Town Council, had to be released by this board. And knowing that the board was meeting this evening, they, the AG's office said that that was appropriate for the board to do that. It met the intent of the decision. That's really all I have to say on that unless there's any questions.
I make a motion to release the email dated August 11th, 2016, from John Rooney.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, we, sorry, thank you. Next up, review of committee charges. The first, the Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee. At our last meeting, we had extended the date, the term until this meeting. I know we had received some comments from the Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee themselves. And we were going to discuss the charge, changes to the charge and extending the charge further. So, that being said.
So in, so I just wanted to point out, in the packet, you have the charge, the full charge as originally voted by the board. You have the comments, the suggested changes that were provided by the Golf Course CR Committee. And then Mr. Shea had submitted his suggested edits for consideration.
If I could just give context to the comments that I submitted. Again, we had discussed at our last meeting that, you know, we would all review it and offer comments to Mr. Purple, which I did. The first recommended change that I had was on the expiration date for the group. And I just pretty much set it to coincide with the meeting following final execution of the conservation restriction rather than set a date certain. I think at the time, we had not, or the ball was still in the court for the state review of the conservation restriction document itself. We have since that time received comments which seem, in effort to apply consistency throughout the document, we've all seen the comments and the explanation from it. The second change that I had was I had seen that the Conservation Restriction Committee had recommended adding facilitation of the Audubon International Classic Golf Course Enrollment Process and providing support to the Golf Course Management Company. That task, I think, is better suited to the Golf Course Committee itself rather than the Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee. I thought that that was introducing a conflict between those two committees. I think I see that more as a golf course activity rather than the Golf Course Restriction Committee. I also think that, you know, if you look at the membership of the Golf, of the Conservation Restriction Committee, you know, Ms. Gillespie will have continued involvement in the process and her role in CPC. Mr. Smith will have continued involvement with his role in the Conservation Commission, which is a coholder to this document. Mr. Fortin is also a member of the Golf Course Committee, so he will have continued involvement. I think the two citizens at large, I think one of them didn't even apply to be reappointed to the committee, Mr. Candela. And I actually had a conversation with Mr. Pearson about that change. And, you know, from, he was surprised, first of all, that the committee was even reappointed. He thought that their work was complete. We explained that we wanted them to continue through the final comment process. And particular, to this comment, he thought that it was from the discussion that they had where this was added, that it was just important that we follow through and provide the Audubon International enrollment, which I agree with completely. But again, I just think that that is a task better suited for the Golf Course Committee itself. So that's the reasoning behind the comments that I offered. And, you know, certainly other members can have different opinions, which is, which is all fine, but that's the reasoning behind my thought.
Mrs. Vanniff?
I, again, again, I apologize that I was not at the 21st meeting. The duties, to me, it's kind of confusing. The committee shall review and comment on the conservation restriction revisions as it progresses through EEA review process. Who are, can I ask Freddie directly? Who would you be commenting to, Ms. Gillespie? To the Board of Selectmen? Or where does the comments go? Town Council?
I imagine it would be like next, the Wednesday, the 25th, Conservation Commission and SVT, and we're on the agenda if we're appointed, to be partaking of that conversation with, I believe the special counsel is there. I, so if you directed us to report to you and not to the coholders on our opinion, so they would have the benefit of that. I'm not sure that, I have a copy of the EEA's comments, but I haven't had a chance to go through them. If we are extended or whatever, our charge continued under this new charge, I guess.
Freddie, just so you know, that was forwarded to you. You should have-
I said I have it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you didn't have it. I'm sorry.
I absolutely received a copy. I've been pretty busy, so I haven't had a chance to go through it. And if our committee is, I don't know what we're calling this, re-
Appointed.
Reappointed. Well, it's not, we're already, if there's a new charge, whatever, then I think I wouldn't, would certainly be up to the Selectmen to say who we'll report to. But I would imagine we would be reporting to the other people who are reviewing it so that they would have benefit in a timely manner of our comments.
Okay. Then I would suggest that you report to the Board of Selectmen. So we have a complete loop and everyone else is receiving the comments at the same time, but we have them.
Excuse me, Mrs. Vanniff, that is already listed under Termined Organization. The board shall, the committee shall report to the Board of Selectmen as required. Number two, bullet point two, under Termined Organization.
I know, but I'm talking about the review and comments. To me, those are written comments. That's how I'm interpreting. To be written comments.
I would imagine if we go to the Conservation Commission meeting with SVT and us on the agenda, that we would make some verbal comments at that time because we may not have met before then to have written comments. But any written comments we have would come to the Board of Selectmen. I'm not sure how intensive this process is going to be. It's just another set of eyes with a different perspective than the coholders of the restriction, whether the Butters might have an opinion or Recreation or Open Space to voice it. But I don't see this as the nitty-gritty work like we just went through last year. It's more just to keep the continuity of this group that's been working together, that helped draft the original one, to see that if there's, if EEA comes back with some changes that need to be met, that the resulting change that's made still meets the intent that we felt it originally had as you accepted. But I don't see there's a lot of, it's a continuation, continuity, having the, all the stakeholders having eyes on it, but I've not been through this process.
As long as we receive any written documentation, that we also have copies of it.
I think, I think that was our intent by not changing the, the charge, that you would be the people we-
Okay. As long as we understand that that's the case.
Yeah.
Freddie, when would you guys, or when have you had a conversation as to when you might be meeting?
We haven't had any because we're kind of in limbo.
Summer, yeah. Everything, agreed.
It's summer and we're not sure we're going to be a committee after tonight. So, and it's summer. And if I may, I wanted to address Brian's comment, or do you want to wait on that?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So there may be some misunderstanding about the Golf Course application to the Audubon International project. That was approved at town meeting. It's a joint, by CPA Funds, and it's a joint project of the Open Space Preservation Commission and the Golf Course Committee. The Open Space Preservation Commission took the lead on that and would be the lead ones running it through. That's the way the application was set up. That's how it was proposed to CPA, and that's what was approved at town meeting. The, the conception of having the Golf Course CR Committee play a role is, again, you have an established committee familiar with the project, representing a large group of stakeholders. At our last meeting, the Open Space Preservation Commission voted to, I don't have the exact words in front of me, I think I sent them on, but voted that we recommended that the Golf Course CR Committee take that, on that responsibility while the Open Space Preservation Commission and the Golf Course Committee still have lead responsibility, not lead, but key responsibility for the CPA project. I spoke with Lou, Chair of the Golf Course Committee. He's, he also recommends the Golf Course CR Committee take this on. The whole point of the project for the CPA funding is to alleviate the Golf Course Management Company of having to do any work. That work has to get done. And as it's set up now as a CPA project, that's for the Open Space Preservation Commission and the Golf Course Committee to do. We know the Golf Course Committee is busy with the building relocation of the clubhouse, the parking lot, redesigning the golf course. I mean, they don't have a lot of bandwidth to take this on. The Open Space Preservation Commission has a lot of work to do and we thought it would benefit all if it wasn't just a couple sets of eyes doing all the work, whereas having a group of stakeholders who have varied interests. So the difference between yes, I would still be involved as CPA, conservation would still be involved, Golf Course Committee still involved, Recreation, that, I think there's only one at large. I think Dave is a Recreation representative.
Correct.
And the neighborhood. There's benefit in having us all sit down at the table together and discuss because what one person may think is the right way to go on something may not be, you know, the Golf Course Committee might think differently than in a Butter. Again, I don't think there's a lot of wiggle room here. The Audubon International has a set process you have to follow, but there's details and work to be done. And speaking as an individual, not, I'd like to have the extra set of eyes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schifrin, comments?
Yeah, it was, you know, my intent in originally extending this committee solely to have them review the final draft and report back to this board with their opinion on the changes, if any. So I don't think it should be their role, duty should be expanded beyond that at all. The Audubon International enrollment could be a lengthy process. And if the Golf Course Committee needs another board or committee to do that, I think they should approach us and we could make such a committee if we felt it was necessary. But I think their role should simply be limited to the final review and reporting to the Selectmen.
Mrs. Vanniff, further comments?
It was discussed at town meeting. I have to agree with Mrs. Gillespie. And I, I believe there's an advantage right now to have them help. But I'm not familiar enough to know what that assistance would be and how involved it is. So I'm not the one to, to say it has no value or it has value. I would like to be able to review it for a while to see what, how it's progressing, to see what that value is. As long as they're reporting to the Board of Selectmen on whatever they do, I'm comfortable with that. Okay.
And I agree with that. And with respect to the Audubon International, it was obviously discussed at town meeting, but it wasn't discussed that the Conservation Restriction Committee would be the ones-
Right.
-leading the charge on it. So, you know, personally, I agree with Brian on this, that I would, I would not be in favor of adding that task to this committee right now. I think they should focus on getting the CR through the final state review, getting that in place. And I just personally think that ultimately the Golf Course Committee, you know, they, I mean, they're, you know, faced right now with keeping the golf course going with the challenge, you know, they're hot and heavy in the, in the middle of construction trying to keep that golf course going. And, you know, it's, I don't know that they're going to be tak, taking on the Audubon International enrollment right now, but I think they're the ones that are best positioned to know when the course is most ready to start that enrollment process. So I think it should be that committee that, that takes this on as part of their charge. That's just my opinion.
My only question with that is, and Freddie, it's a joint, it was a joint application with Open Space and Golf, so-
This is a project, basically, right now, if you don't have the Golf Course CR Committee on it, it comes back to the Open Space Preservation Commission at this time. The project that was thoroughly discussed and vetted, the application, there are different prod, there are different programs through the Audubon International. The one we applied for, the Golf Management Company agreed to, the Golf Course Committee agreed to, and that was discussed with the Selectmen, with your support, went to town meeting and passed. meeting, and passed. Golf course, well, let me just finish. The Audubon International Classic Course Program is at the get-go. They want to be looking at, they're not waiting till we have the construction done. They want to be out here now, giving information, input to the best of their ability without, they're golf experts, not just environmental experts. So the, the, the value of this is if there's something a little bit off, you fix it before you put the shovel in the ground. Now, we're running a little late for that. They want to be involved, they, they know the architect, they want to review those plans. This isn't wait till they're done. That's another program, different, different thing, and we already vetted this before town meeting. So the issue is, it's not, and I want to be respectful here, but it's a CPA-funded project by town meeting, and the lead person on the project was the Open Space Preservation Commission, and we co, it was a co-proposal with the Golf Course Committee. But it's, it's really how it was presented, who filled out the application, did all the legwork, and as the Golf Course Committee understands it today, it's an Open Space Preservation Commission project to get this done, put through the enrollment. Town meeting approved it. It's not to be waiting six months until they're done. The Golf Course Committee is really, you know, stretched pretty thin, and that was the reason, thinking having, you know, other people looking at what's going on would be beneficial. Basically, we're going to have to hire some consultants to do the site assessment for the environmental evaluation for wildlife habitat, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty strenuous project. They need water sampling done, you have to hire those professionals, a wetland scientist, and, you know, someone's got to do that work, and I think we benefit if we have, there's different aspects of it, and if we have different eyes on the project with their different expertise that is existing on the Golf Course CR Committee. And if not, it just comes back to the Open Space Commission, and that's fine, we can figure out how to do it. But it's not like it's going to wait because you don't put the CR Committee on it. It has to happen sooner rather than later.
Well, agreed. And if it comes back to the Open Space Commission, is it not under their purview to be able to set up a subcommittee with some of these same members? Or does that fall to the board of selectmen? Because it was their project that they brought forward.
I think it's their purview if they wanted to try. I think it's under their purview if they wanted to try to put something together. But I, I, I guess I defer back to Mr. Shea's comments that a lot of these same people that are on this committee now are going to remain involved in this process if it's, as Ms. Gillespie has stated, it's a joint endeavor between the Golf Committee and Open Space. So that's.
I guess the point also is all sitting in the same room, same table, instead of having to go to mutual, numerous meetings of different boards and committees to get any information or.
Thank you.
That's it.
So I guess I'm, I'm of the, the thought process, well, I, I agree with, with the comments made and what the charge was when we sat down and did the charge for this committee. If another committee is just going to be created, made up of the same people, to me, it seems like a lot of extra work when they're already in place to do this, even to start the process. I don't know how long the process is. I, I agree with the, the length question. And Ms. Gillespie, I'm going to ask you one final question, if you don't mind. You seem to know about the Audubon International. How long is this, do you anticipate this process being? I mean, I, I agree with extending something, you know, with open-ended, but what do you anticipate the initial application process and getting this started timeframe?
It's a complicated process. The, it can take years. I'm not expecting this committee to be running for years because at some point, what has to be set up is a committee to do the, to manage the Golf Course International. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about getting it up and running, getting it, the.
So long-term, then, there's, there's going to need to be a committee that's going to oversee this down the road at some point.
That will probably be made up of members of the, like, I know they need, you have to have a wetland scientist. That's probably going to be, you know, the town may choose to use the Conservation Commission's wetland scientist. I'm assuming there's a cost for that, that's why we put together the money. I'm not sure. So there's different tasks you check off, and as fast as you move forward and as fast as the, as the construction happens, I mean, I'm imagining you can zip through it and other town, you know, other places might take longer. The, until they, until we, okay, let me just step back. When you do the application, the first step is you have to submit this environmental wildlife assessment, and that, we're going to have to hire someone to do that. And then once that's submitted, they start making, and they look at the plans, they'll start making their recommendations, and based on that, we'll know how involved it will be to meet their criteria. Some of the things they do are simple things, like they might recommend you change your mowing schedule. If you look at the golf course right now, it seems to be managed in a very environmentally sensitive way. The international program is a national program, international actually. Massachusetts has pretty strict Wetland Protection Act that other states don't have. We're already going to check off a lot of the boxes, so I can't say how long because each course is different. We're a small course, we have some unique situations, we have the reservoir there, we have a stream going through it. But it looks to me like we're doing a lot of the things they're going to ask to do upfront, so, you know, it's, and then the third part of it is that, once the CR is signed off on, which now have the conservation holders, we're going to require a management plan from the golf course. And one of the reasons this came about was because SVT admitted when they were first being asked at one of our Golf Course CR Committees, they said, "We have no idea how to manage a golf course." The Conservation Commission agent and the representative on the committee said, "We have no idea how to manage a golf course." And then you have the Golf Management Company that knows, but, you know, to me, this puts up a, maybe inherent friction, that people don't know how to talk the same language. Audubon International is primarily a golfing organization with an, an environmental purview. They're going to speak both languages and know how to make a management plan that works, that's good conservation, but it's going to allow a golf course to successfully and profitably operate. And if you remember from our presentation, some of the most prestigious courses in the country are Audubon International classic courses, and it's going to lend a lot of prestige and PR. So it's, you know, I feel it's worth doing to help make the golf course a success.
All right, well, I think town meeting agreed with you on that, absolutely. So, the question becomes, if we're going to, for me, if we're going to be setting up a committee to manage and oversee the Audubon International, maybe it's best for me to set it up sooner rather than later and let them see it from beginning to end.
Another committee?
Well, that's, that's, that's what's going to happen, basically, anyway. Mrs. Faniff, I think if, if we.
If it's deleted, you would need another committee.
Yeah.
So the committee that is reporting to multiple committees now would have to report to another committee, and everybody would start.
Agreed. If, if this.
But I think that's partly why I think we're, we're mixing two separate tasks and two separate responsibilities under one committee's title. I mean, they're the Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee. I think they ought to focus on that, you know, you know, because we're, we're going to have to go back and revisit the charge again. Once the Conservation Restriction Committee is done, we're still have this Conservation Restriction Committee for a Conservation Restriction that's, that's done, signed, agreed. But they're working on something differently. So I would, that's why I recommended the change that I made.
I think the summary that the CR Committee should be a focused and specific charge, and we should hear from Open Space and the Golf Course Committee. If we do in fact need a committee for the Audubon enrollment, we should make a committee that is focused and targeted on that, rather than bonding them. I don't think it was ever the intent that the CR Committee exists for years past the signing of the CR.
Okay. Any?
Are you suggesting moving that, this responsibility to the Golf Course Committee? I, is that what you're suggesting?
So, so right now, the only motion that I'll make is that we modify the charge for the Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee, the CR Committee, as I proposed. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion?
And then I think we handle the, as Brian said, we handle the Audubon International enrollment process as a.
A separate pre-standing committee or part of the Golf Course Committee? Not the CR Committee?
Correct, to be determined.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Can I make a follow-up?
Yes.
Observation of the email, Ms. Gillespie? I don't know if anybody got back to you, but you do have access to town council through request through the town administrator if you need town, town council? If you need the services of town council, go to the town administrator and have that request.
That's not, I understand that, like any committee has, but originally, we were set up with him being our.
Part of the committee, right.
Part of the committee, and I was informed to call Luke and email Luke at any time. That has changed. It's not, you know, it's back to the, the original way, that was the point we made. And I just want to, I know your vote's taken, I just want to say, though, there's no expectation that the enrollment process, I think we mixed metaphors, it wasn't metaphors, but somebody asked how long the certification takes. Totally different than starting and getting it, the enrollment done. Few months, hopefully. Get it up and running, and then, you know, whatever we set into place. So basically, that's going to start happening, you know, now. So with, with or without the committee, that's moving forward. I don't think the Open Space Preservation Commission was looking, wouldn't be setting up a committee at this time. We were just hoping someone else could help us out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Main Street Design Working Group.
So I'll provide an update on that. So the board had asked that I work with Karen and Mr. Purple to modify that charge with vacation conflicts. We just have not had the opportunity to, to meet, to review the revisions to that charge. So I'm going to recommend that we hold off on that for now. I don't think that's a deal breaker here, you know, we, the state just received bids a week or two ago on the project, and by the time it's going to take them to get a contract in place, I think it's unlikely that work is going to commence this year anyways, so we're not under a rush to get that revision done. Hopefully, within the next week or two, Karen, Mark, and I can get together and we can formalize something for our next meeting.
Perfect. Do we have a motion to postpone?
So I'd motion, I'd move that we not act on the committee's charge for the Main Street Design Working Group.
I'm just tabling it.
Table it, until the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number three, review of Fayette Hall disposition, RFP response. We did get responses from the planning board, from CHOPC, and planning board was looking for additional information that, from town council, which was received today. Does the board have that information?
I don't.
I have not received anything today on that.
Okay.
Is it a late email?
Yeah, right before the meeting.
Yep.
It's with everything.
Okay. Let's see. As the board reviews that. All right, thank you. As the board looks these over, there was a, a bid that came in, as we were well aware of from our last meeting, from the RFP, from Bartolini Builders for $5,000 with conditions attached to the proposal. We did receive comments from CHOPC, and CHOPC, CHOPC had voted unanimously to support the proposal with the following conditions and concerns. One, concern that the price proposal of 5,000 is too low. Two, concern that the 18-month timeframe for permitting is too low. Three, the site must be able to support SEPTIC for minimum of three affordable units. Four, assurance that the affordable units will result at Fayette Hall in trade for the two affordable units at Illabella Estates conditioned per the special permit for the flexible major residential subdivision dated July 18th, 2006. And five, ensure that the two affordable units recorded at Illabella remain conditioned under the current approval until the three affordable units at Fayette Hall can be counted. That was CHOPC's letter, and planning board was looking for additional information that just came in, so.
And planning board still needs to act then on this.
Correct, on, on town council's letter.
To make, so they can, this isn't certainly directing them how to vote.
No, it's not directing them how to vote, and I can touch base. Town Council's letter basically said that it would be, this legal's, this office's legal analysis and considered opinion that the planning board, subject to the constraints and standards of review specified herein, would have that authority in such consideration of relocation of such units is a substantial change under section 174, 13 point 2, section G, section 4, chapter 4. In, we defer to the planning board's administrative authority to decide applicability. So I certainly would like to hear more from planning board as one of the conditions was that these two units be able to be swapped, if I may.
Yep.
And I know we're under the 120-day timeframe, was it September 7th? Was it the, sorry.
Sorry, September 7th, yes.
September 7th. Our next meeting is the 14th. I know, I have some questions and some concerns. I don't know if, if the board's ready to have a discussion on this, or if we want to wait to hear to our next meeting from planning board.
I would prefer to wait to, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
I would prefer to wait to hear from planning before I took an official vote, but certainly if we want to, you know, discuss, you know, our, you know, thoughts on the, on the proposal as submitted, knowing the planning board still needs to, I think, make a significant decision on this as well, we can do that.
No, and, and I agree. I think planning board is, is going to, with, with their decision on this is going to carry a lot of weight as far as, even if the two units are able to be swapped. So I'm, I'm for waiting to hear from planning board, but obviously, any comments or questions or discussion from the board is certainly open. Mrs. Faniff?
As this board's rep on the Self-Real Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee, the letter does sound a little contradictory that we support something, but we have concerns. The major concern was the affordability being part of an approved plan, and we use, and we count those units toward our housing inventory, and the 18-month timeframe for the permitting process of establishing three units compared to the two, two units, that's why that's a concern. We don't want to lose the two units that we're counting. And if the town, if the planning board feels that a waiver is appropriate, we felt strongly that the units at Ayabella. we felt strongly that the units at Ayabella Estates would be required, and the developer could not move that project forward at the risk of the town losing those units and counting them in our affordable housing stock, which could give another developer a, an opportunity to come back to the community and say, "We're not committed, the community's not committed in developing affordable housing, and I don't want that to happen." And I'm, that's my statement, it was stated before, but that is a concern here. These have been identified and approved in a development, and there should be some real strong conditions that that development, according to the conditions that after the seventh house or the sixth home that's being built, they cannot go any further until these units are either at Fayetteville or in that proposed development that's been approved. So I wanna, and we felt that the price was too low.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to share, at, at this point, or even to wait, some, some of the concerns that I have, and one of them was the price being too low on the property for the 5,000. Parking was obviously another concern. We don't know as far as the park across the street, Fayetteville Park. One of the conditions is an engineering evaluation of the existing structure, its components and the parcel satisfactory to the proponent. I would have assumed, and I may be corrected, that that's basically as-is, in a sense, depending on what the evaluation comes back at. Yes?
Yes, well, so, one of the things I just wanted to point out, and just to clarify, per the terms in the RFP, the closing on the property must occur within 120 days. Okay, so, you have, the bid was rece, the bid was received on May 7th. By September 7th, the closing must occur on the property. Given the list of conditions, and given some of the issues we're discussing tonight, especially the issue about the transference of the two affordable units, planning board has to meet, you know, the permitting process. There is no way that, that you can meet the requirements of the RFP based on the submittal. It just can't happen. There is also a condition in the RFP that the proposals can't be withdrawn, modified, or amended for a period of 150 days from the date that they're submitted. So, what you have in front of you is what you have in front of you with, with the list of 13 conditions and the timeframe, so, they don't line up.
Is there the potential for the proposer to offer a letter extending the 120 days?
You can only extend it by 60 days. Mutually. I don't, really don't think that that helps you. With the permitting and the other, I mean, you know, so the satisfaction of the, of the conditions and closing, I, I just, like I said, I, I think, I think it's, it's problematic to try and, and, and line up those two timeframes.
True, I just-
Mr. Schiffern can, can comment, can comment on that, but, but, but that, that's the overarching issue. I mean, if you wanna talk about price, if you wanna talk about, you know, those other things that, that Mrs. Faniff, you know, started to get into, and I think Ms. Braccio was gonna start to maybe mention. But that's the overarching issue, is you have two timelines that, that don't line up.
And this was, this is the result of a publicly bid process.
This is a result, so if you, if you recall back-
So we run the risk of trying to go through this again and not getting an offer as good as this one.
Well, you have, you know, I, I know that-
You know, if, if this proposer chooses not to submit again next time, we may wind up with no responses, who knows?
Right, right.
Well, I look at it the other way, like, this gives us, what I'd like to do is have a meeting with Mr. Bartolini here to discuss some of the things in the proposal. And then that gives us an opportunity to go back out to bid again and maybe get a proposal that everybody is more comfortable with in terms of timeframe and conditions and parking, stuff like that.
But you need to be careful with the bid laws-
Yeah.
That you, that, that you're not doing a sole source bid and everything in that, that you, that you would-
We're not accepting any of the current bids because they don't meet our specifications, and we're going out to bid again.
No, absolutely.
But the fact that we've had this process, and where we are right now is a good opportunity to meet with the one person that has made a proposal and discuss it with them. Which if we hadn't gone through this process-
But after you make the decision on this part of, on this process.
Right now, right now, yep.
Right.
Yep.
So if you wanted to meet with Mr. Bartolini and have a conversation about, and just understand more of what's on the table here and what he has, then you're still entertaining this bid.
You're changing the bid, yeah.
Well, you can't change, but you're not changing anything exactly, but-
I'm not changing it, I just wanna understand better what he's proposing and what, say, would happen if we couldn't get a third unit there, or there's a septic problem, or what he really plans to do with parking there. I just wanna have those discussions pertaining to this proposal. And then make a decision on this proposal.
Mm-hmm.
And then, if we have to go out to bid again, we will do so.
My only concern with that is based on the 13 conditions and the timeframe. 18 months is a long period of time. To 18 months down the road, we could be sitting back at this table again if any one of these conditions can't be met. As, as far as the, the septic goes, I think there's, there's potential issues there with the septic, which is, again, one of the conditions. We can go down the conditions, and all it takes is one to basically get this thrown out. So-
Those discussions we have may lead to some changes in the new RFP that goes out. And there's concerns that the price was too low. I honestly think the price is about $4,900 higher than I thought it would be. So, I think the proposer is still gonna be in a position, whatever, a few months from now, where he wants to move the units, and we're still gonna be in a position where we wanna try to save that building. So...
I understand-
I think if it takes a year and a half to do that, that may be the only way.
Or a nonprofit, or the Housing Authority.
Right, yep, Habitat for Humanity.
The town could turn it over to the Housing Authority with the condition that the building exterior stays the same, and they can go to CPC or to the state for grants.
Yep. I just, I, I disagree on the $4,900 too much. I, I, and I have concern-
With the idea that you maintain the building, I think it's, you know, the value is not in maintaining the building. If someone could buy it and build something there, or even knock it down, then there is more value. But with the conditions that we want to put on the buyer, I think that's a reasonable price.
So just to be clear, and just to step back, which I started to, I, I think I started to do, no, that's okay. It is, so when town meeting approved this, it was approved for the town, authorized the board of selectmen to dispose of the property, and there were no conditions as listed by town meeting. There were discussions about, you know, some concerns about trying to maintain the exterior and trying to address some parking issues, which I believe I had discussions with you when you wore your other hat at that time for the, for the park across the street. After town meeting, the board set up a committee, set up an ad hoc committee to take a look at the property, to take a look at what they felt was important. And the three things they came back with, obviously, well, price was one piece. Trying to maintain the exterior of the property was the second. And the third was trying to find a, a solution for, to provide some parking as a result of the, the, the additional piece. Those were all things that was nice to have, and I think that, you know, it'd be for this board to consider, excuse me, if the proposal came back and it was, you know, it was, whatever the number is for money, it was 80, it was $90,000, but maybe they weren't gonna do the other things, the board would have to consider those things. It would be the trading off and the balancing of those issues. And so, it's, it's this board's discretion how you wanna handle those things, what is, you know, important, you know, to you in terms of, in terms of the proposals that you have in front of you. Again, we have, we have one proposal. I know that, you know, there has been, you know, a phone call, you know, or two of, of, from people that, you know, didn't know that this was out, that didn't know that this happened, that may have had some interest. So maybe we didn't do a great job, you know, in marking it, marketing it. You know, there may be other ways, you know, to work with the, with the Economic Development Commission to try and, and find ways to, you know, other, other interested parties that may be interested. Mrs. Faniff has, has brought up something, Ms. Braccio has brought up something else tonight, but, again, all of those things, you know, really are just something in the future that really can't be, you know, taken into consideration until you determine what you have here or what you're going to do with the proposal that has been provided by Mr. Bartolini. And, and, you know, to have the conversation, as you suggest, to, to better understand some of those things, there may be value, you know, in that with the understanding that, you know, that, that the proposal as presented, you know, can't change. You're voting on what you've got, but it may be good to have understandings for some of those things moving forward.
And the RFP didn't require those things, like the parking and the maintenance, maintaining the exterior. They were just weighted, so-
Correct.
If there was interested people, somebody could have proposed, you know, $200,000 and build the new building.
Correct.
But there weren't any offers like that.
So if you had, that was, the whole purpose of that is if you had multiple offers, to your point, right, so somebody was gonna give you more money, you may have taken that into consideration more, or somebody was gonna preserve the exterior, that was more important to you than the money piece.
Yeah.
But you didn't have the chance to use that weighting because you had one proposal.
We have one that at least is trying to meet a lot of our criteria. The planning board and CHOPC aren't opposed to them, so I think it's worth pursuing.
I think it needs to go out to rebid if we're gonna make any kind of changes or change the direction that-
Eventually, it obviously will.
No, I'm talking about, I'm concerned about the RFP. I'm not whether I feel my suggestions are valid or not. I don't want to appear that we're changing an RFP leaning in a direction and having conversations when that's not appropriate. So I think we need to re-advertise it.
Yeah.
And put it on the town website, put it in a very upfront town website. Go to Mass Historical, see if the Housing Authority is interested in it. And if the Housing Authority is interested in it, I suggest they look for state grants. And if it's a CPC application, whether it's this board or another applicant, they have to prepare that application before CPC, and it has to be approved at town meeting. So I'm just saying, we have to be very careful how we proceed with this. So I think time is on our, on our side to re-advertise it and get some of these questions answered.
But that's why I think the discussion with the proposer will be beneficial because we'll learn things like a 120-day closing with the things we want in there wasn't a realistic requirement.
All right, so if we put it out for, which we're gonna have to, a new RFP, I think parking's number one.
Yep.
We have invested a lot of money across the street. That should be number one. It came, it was suggested in the report back to this committee and through the RFP process. That's number one. The exterior of the building, or the building itself, that's under the historical commission. Nobody can just go in there and tear it down. No, if they purchase it, I believe they have to apply for a demolition bylaw.
I didn't think this-
Go ahead.
-fell under the demolition delay.
If we owned it, it didn't, but if we sell it, someone else.
I think it would fall under-
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So they would have to approach the historical commission.
So you could, eventually, if someone was interested in doing that, however, there would be a process they would need to go through.
I'm probably confusing it with a different building.
That's my understanding, they would have to approach the historical commission. And, again, I don't think we should be changing a subdivision based on an, an assumption that we're gonna achieve a goal that we have, we have as a community. That needs to be really, in this proposal, we really have to have an answer to, when are we gonna see them, not 18 months after something is finished.
All right.
All right, so we're gonna vote to re-advertise the RFP?
We'd have to, we'd have to-
You need to, you need to make a decision on this-
To reject this.
Proposal first.
All right, I'll make a motion that we reject the proposal that we have in front of us this evening.
Can we ask-
Based on the conditions.
Second for discussion.
I would ask that we have the proposer attend our next meeting and make a decision at that meeting.
He is here.
Yeah.
What are you doing? Are you, are you, are you changing the RFP right before my eyes?
No, we don't have to accept a bid, that's what we're discussing.
Yep.
No, we're not changing, we're not changing an RFP.
No, no.
No, we're not.
I don't know, the rest of us are hearing it differently than I'm hearing it differently. Maybe came over to talk a little bit.
We're not changing the RFP, we're discussing the RFP and the con, the concerns of CHOPC in the letter that was written, which I believe you got a copy, and the planning board letter, which I believe you got a copy, or you, you were to get a copy, 'cause I know I made the motion that you receive it.
I haven't got a copy of anything, I can't.
Did you get CHOPC's?
I don't know, I might have an email or something.
Okay, so-
I don't think I have.
The letter. No, we're trying to avoid doing that at this table.
Mr. Bartolini, I'm sorry, can you come to a microphone? I'm sorry, just- Public-
Public hearing?
No.
Republican talk.
Right, I mean, just so the public at home can, can hear the conversation that's being had, that's all.
It, it sounded to me like you were changing the RFP right before my eyes here, so that's why I spoke up.
It was suggested by a member to have a conversation with you over your proposal, have a conversation with you on your proposal and change, potentially change what might have been in the RFP. And my answer to that was, with caution, we shouldn't do that.
All right, maybe I didn't hear that.
Okay.
Yep.
My suggestion to the board is they close one process before you start to consider another process. Because they need, they're bound by the terms of this- Because they need, they're bound by the terms of this process, to your point, you know, before you, before you entertain, entertain anything else.
And then there was a follow-up question from Mr. Purple as far as what was important to this board if we decide to go down another process, okay? And that's when I mentioned parking was important and the exterior of the building, which you already know that. Because you were at CHOPSY, so we've already had that discussion.
Your requirements are in there. May fifteenth is when you were supposed to tell me whether I, you were going to sell it to me. And then thirty days later was supposed to be a purchase and sale. But the offer to purchase is just that, it's the offer to purchase real estate. So I don't know what we're doing with these, these timelines.
So one timeline.
Mr. Purple, what are the timelines that you shared with the applicant?
So there was a proposed timeline that was in, he's correct, there's a proposed timeline that was in the RFP. But that, you know, obviously those dates have come and gone. But it was a proposed timeline. It was not something that, you know, that we were, that we were bound to. It would have been nice to, to try and, and move in that direction as quickly as.
So this board did not fail on that timeline?
It didn't fail on the timeline, it was not required, but it was, you know, that was, you know, I think a hopeful, you know, timeframe.
Okay.
Obviously, that's not where we are, but in terms of the closing happening, you know, within a certain period of time, that is, you know, something that, you know, is, is specifically stated, you know, as a, as a have to in the RFP.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table, seconded for discussion.
That's to reject the proposal?
Yes.
Re-bid it.
And rebid?
Re-bid.
Outlining what's important to this board.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, and I guess I would just say that, you know, my read of the tea leaves from the town meeting, when town meeting gave us this permission, I think that preservation of the building was, was a strong component of it, was a strong sentiment in the hall. And I think that's an advantage that this proposal offers. I think there's, almost seems to be an expectation that we want, you know, not only to preserve the building, but also get the price we want for it. And I think the market's saying you can't get both and you got to choose between one, one or the other. So I think we still have the opportunity to, with the rebid, to, to get that. But, you know, we, we are turning down an offer to, that would have resulted in preservation of the building, so.
How quickly can we get that back out?
Depends on any of the change, depends on any of the changes that you want, if there are any changes that you want to make to the RFP document before it goes back out.
Do you circulate that again?
Yes, please.
Yes.
So we can get back to you.
And I think it's not only changes, but just making sure that we advertise it.
If we go, if we take a vote to do that, I guess.
Correct.
All right, so we have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And number four, approve and execute Halloran property purchase and sale agreement.
Members of the board, you have in your packet a purchase and sale agreement for the Halloran property. This was the parcel, the open space parcel that was approved at town meeting that the board was given the authorization to, to acquire. Town council has worked with the, the trust in order to make that happen. And there is a, an agreed upon purchase and sale agreement for the property included in your packet for your consideration for execution this evening.
Comments?
Nope.
Nope, I have none.
I'll move that we approve and execute the Halloran property purchase and sale agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Mrs. Fanaf, I thought you had a question. That was why I delayed. I apologize.
So I will inform council and I believe they're looking at a, at a closing by the end of this month, so.
Thank you. Public comment?
I guess first a question, I've actually forgotten.
Name, sorry, name and.
Kristen Lavalt, thank you. Fall Southwood. But actually up as, speaking as Chair of Recreation, I actually forgot to give a key update during my presentation. Is it appropriate to do so during the public comments?
As a citizen, you may.
So as citizen, Kristen Lavalt, Fall Southwood, I do think it's important, I have been sitting here debating, but I did leave out an important update that we just want to make sure it's shared in the proper forum in a timely manner, so I don't want to wait till next month. And that's just to make sure that, if you have not heard already, that we have been informed that Doreen Ferguson, our Director of Recreation, has shared with us her intentions to retire in the summer of 2019. And we just want to make sure that that information is shared in the proper form and first and foremost to the Board of Selectmen. So as of right now, you know, we, we will begin the planning process to make sure we are well-prepared and well-positioned come next year to move into the next phase. And Doreen is not here tonight, she had vacation, but, you know, had given us the okay to go ahead and do this. And it goes without saying that this, while we're very happy for her, is an extreme loss to all of us after ten-plus years of service. She's going to need to be a very difficult position to fill and we can't thank her enough for her unending contributions. So I just wanted to make sure that we shared that with you. And again, will become part of our ongoing updates in the coming months.
Great, thank you very much and.
Thank you.
It's, it's sad, I, I agree with you. I think most people in town have had interaction with Doreen in recreation at some point or another, so we wish her the best.
Louise Barron, Levin City Hut Lane. Mr. Purple, you said that this property wasn't marketed. You're right. I knew nothing of Fayetteville Hall for sale. I knew nothing about bidding process or sale. I had heard, or I called the selectmen's office and the gallery spokesman who said it was advertised in a central register. I have no idea what a central register is. I'm not a builder, I'm not a real estate agent, I'm not a developer, thank God. But for five thousand dollars, guess what? I'm in. I'll give you a six thousand dollar bid. Who sells a house for five thousand dollars? Are you crazy? Nobody. And so if you're going to market this again, you do need to advertise it in the paper so every single person in this town knows what's going on, because we don't have a clue. I don't have a clue, but I would buy it in a minute, so.
Thank you.
If you're going to consider putting it out, you put it in our local paper. It was in the Metro West for two days. I mean, this doesn't make any sense. So, next thing on my agenda, no discussion whatsoever about the AG's determination of Mr. Rooney. You had this information, Mr. Purple, on June the twelfth. Sent you, the Attorney General's informed you of the fact that Mr. Rooney violated the open meeting law. You have thirty days from that point to, to, to release the email. You have not done that. You could have done it the twenty-first of June, but if it's thirty days, so fine, so that would make it July twelfth. Why didn't you release it?
It was not mine to release, it's the board's to release. The board's had the information since then too. I'm not sure why you're singling me out.
Because in a memo from seven twelve, it says, "On June twelfth, Attorney General's office informed the town the open meeting law complaint filed against Mr. Rooney was upheld." So if it's not you, then, then I'll ask the board. I mean, this should have been released to the public.
I'll answer that. It, it was released to the public tonight. Town council did speak to the AG's office with the summer schedule and everything. This was acceptable to the AG's office, so that's why it was released tonight.
Okay, so my other little, little tidbit is, if this was released on the June twelfth, how could this man be appointed on June twenty-seventh after violating open meeting law to the advisory board? I mean, if you make violations and you violate a very big thing, open meeting law, how are you then, two individuals are not reappointed and this man who violated a law is appointed? It just doesn't make any sense to me. So I'll read this to you. "This town needs to address this matter fully. The misconduct needs to be called out and fully vetted. Any candidate found to have violated state laws and admonished by the Attorney General needs to be disqualified from sitting on any town board or committee as they have disqualified themselves via their own misconduct. I feel very strongly about this. You can't just keep putting people who violate the laws on committees on this board, the advisory committee yet? So I wanted to make this very clear and it's something that you all have to discuss because we are going to discuss it as a town." Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just to clarify, this board does not appoint advisory committee members.
I'm just going to go there.
But who disqualified the, the people on the advisory?
Town moderator, he appoints.
Well, this is for the town moderator as well. Somebody here, a lot of people are a little too much power, but when you have good qualified people that you let go for somebody who's committed laws, who has, has, has violated laws, this makes no sense to me.
Thank you, Mrs. Barron. Ms. Latrell.
Me, me, Latrell, nineteen Oregon Road. I just wanted to point out that the, the value of the bid for five thousand dollars was in the preservation of the building. If it had been put out without preservation, as Mr. Shea, I think, had said, that perhaps the, the bid would have come in much higher if preservation was not an issue. But this bid came in with the preservation of the building, which has value, as we know from the Burnett House, that we paid for that building to be preserved.
Thank you. Nothing further? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.